You know, I ain't been on it three months, but still effects of up in one pan here had a cold and I was putting the end of the x-ray this morning.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at eighteen thirty-two. Roll call, please.
Chuck Angier.
Here.
Tim Duffer.
Here.
Ryan Fox.
Here.
Kermit King.
Here.
Bobby Lovelace. Ben Meeks.
Here.
Ron Scares.
Here.
Keith Scruggs.
Here.
And Bert Sellers.
Thank you. Take a minute to look over the agenda if you would, please. Any items that need to be added to the agenda for tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to add to the agenda tonight, the CIP, discussing the CIP money for Cool Branch Fire and Cool Branch Rescue.
Okay. Let's see.
For the apparatus replacement.
Okay. You've done an unfinished business?
Sir.
Is that, is that the unfinished business, CIP apparatus?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Got you. So noted, thank you. Any other items to be added to the agenda? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need a second and a vote on the change or no? Don't? Um. Or what changes, I guess, that's what I'm trying to say. I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Do we take action on the change? Will we take action on the agenda change? Okay. All right. So all in, any discussion about changing the agenda? Are all in favor of the agenda change? Hold on just a minute. So we, we gotta change the agenda, so this is to not to approve the agenda, this is to change it. Okay. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, gentlemen, cast your votes.
Still waiting on the mover. Uh-oh, Chuck. You're waiting on a mover, right? Were you the mover?
Or somebody seconded it if you would, please.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. All right, cast your votes, please. All vote are in, thank you. The agenda has been amended. All right, approval of the agenda now with the amendment. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Ben, I'm gonna get you hit the second button for me.
Gotta give use of this technology.
All right, gentlemen, cast your ballots. Very good, thank you. If you would, take a minute to read over the minutes from the previous meeting. All right, once everybody's had a minute to look over that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Tap your second button. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, gentlemen, cast your ballot. Thank you. Presentations, county finance presentation. Absolutely, thank you, welcome.
It's good to be here tonight to go over Finance 101 with you guys and answer any questions that you might have on county finances. I hope I won't bore you, I might put you to sleep. If you ever need any sleeping material, just go and get this presentation and maybe that can put you to sleep. But I'm gonna try to give you a high level and not try to get too far down in the weeds, but kinda give you some understanding of what we do from a finance perspective when we start budget and we go through that process. So the first slide talks about... So the first slide is just giving you some FY22 highlights, and many of you may have sat through a budget presentation, but I'm gonna try to take a different take on it. So our total budget this coming year is two hundred and eleven point three million dollars. That is up from this year, our budget was roughly a hundred and seventy-nine million, and a lot of that money is not really our money. The reason for a lot of that is because of the additional CARES money that our school system have, have been fortunate to receive. So a lot of that money is federal and state money and not local dollars. So our total general fund budget is seventy-one point five million dollars. And so our general fund, if you're looking at that, makes up thirty-three point eight percent of the total budget. Now, the reason that that's important is our general fund basically is where everyone in county government lives. We have other funds and we'll get to those, but basically public safety is part of this thirty-three point eight. So the pie graph really shows you a, a great picture of what that looks like. So our total budget is two eleven point three, which is signified by that blue piece of pie. General fund is just a hunk of that pie, and that small little slither that you see there is just the volunteer agency support of one point eight million dollars, which is roughly point eight five percent of the total budget. So it's a very, very small part. So our, moving right along, we wanna see where all of our money comes from. So what do we have to work with? You start with your general fund. Even though it's two hundred and eleven million dollars, we don't worry about all that other stuff, 'cause it's being funded some kind of other way. But we have seventy-one point five million dollars. Off of that figure, you take off your designated state funds. So we get state funds in the general fund, and sometimes it's, they tell you, you can use it for what you want, and other times they say, no, you have to use it for A, B, C, D, and E, and you can't use it for anything else. So that figure's sixteen point one million dollars. We have local salaries of roughly ten million dollars that, of course, we have to pay. Our constitutional officers, just the local share of those officers is nine point three million dollars. Our debt is nine point eight million dollars. We do supply contributions for public and mental health, which means that if we don't make that contribution, we get no public health or mental health for our citizens of the county, so we definitely have to do that. That's one point one million. Our contribution to schools is nineteen point seven million dollars currently. So just to put it in perspective, we receive revenue, if you see in that blue strip there, twenty-five point five million dollars in real estate taxes. Nineteen point seven million dollars of twenty-four point five goes right off the top to the schools. So that leaves us with not a lot to work with. DSS is at nine hundred thousand, so our balance to fund everything else is four point six million dollars. The other items that's shown in that blue section there is basically the categories of income that our Board of Supervisors has any say-so over raising or lowering, it includes real estate taxes, public service corps, which includes both real estate and personal property, personal property taxes, machinery and tools, merchants' capital, vehicle licenses, and meals tax. And we're gonna go over some other options, tax options, at the end of our presentation that we're looking at, so that we're not always hitting those property owners. We do wanna do a better job of sharing the love with everyone and help it, letting everybody help fund our budget. So what is that four point six that's left? What do we use that for? Well, that covers general government, reassessment, the local share of our electoral board and registrar, our courts, community development, our pet center, public safety, including the volunteers and nine-one-one, economic development, capital improvements, recreation, library, and our Children's Services Act, which is also a mandated program that we cannot not do. So we get roughly five point five million dollars for that program from the state, but our share is roughly two million dollars in the FY22 budget. So two million dollars comes off your four point six, you dwindle in pretty quick, right? So what is the general fund and who's in it? And I shared a little bit about who's in there, but again, it's general government, courts, your public safety, libraries, recreation, community development, buildings and grounds, Pet Center, Children's Services Act, or what we refer to as CSA, and of course, our debt is housed in the general fund. Some of our local support, we do have to give to some local agencies. One is Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board, Danville Community College, the Virginia Department of Health, of course, our county schools, community action, and of course, we have to give money to gain businesses here. So we have a large push on economic development here. And then anything that we need to do capital-wise, whether it be facilities or buying software, large, large purchases run through our Capital Improvements Fund. So that's what, what's in our general fund. So one of the things I wanted to share, I did point out that we have nine point two million dollars locally funded of our constitutional officers. These constitutional officers are voted on by the public, so it's your sheriff, your treasurer, your commissioner of revenue, your clerk of court, and your Commonwealth's attorney. And a lot of people think these are state-funded jobs. They're not. They are county offices that are state-supported. So we get money through the Compensation Board. So all of their budgets for FY22 total collectively fifteen point five million dollars. Of that, we get six point two seven eight back from the state. So roughly sixty percent of those offices are covered by local dollars, and I know that's kinda hard to see, but sixty percent. And it's, it varies. Of course, our clerk of court and Commonwealth's attorney, theirs are roughly about sixty percent, it flips the other way. But then you can see our sheriff's office, we fund quite a bit, close to forty percent just for our sheriff's office. We only get about a quarter percent for treasurer and commissioner of revenue. Debt, debt is a huge part of our general fund. If we could eliminate our debt in the general fund, we'd have a lot of money. Nine point eight million dollars goes to pay and fund school construction. It also funds our nine-one-one towers, but mostly that debt right now is encompassed by our schools. So our middle schools and our high schools are still a large chunk of that. That represents that big, long, blue line, the one going up and down. Our debt capacity is the little squiggly line across the top, which means we have capacity to borrow more money, but then you have to, have to pay it back, and people don't understand that. A lot of people say, well, I voted for that bond referendum, but we finished them schools a long time ago. Like, they don't understand that voting for something like that still means that you have to pay for it. And so by twenty thirty-four, we should be done with our schools, our middle school construction project and our high school project, which we will be in a very good shape then. But then you see on the horizon, there are things that we have to do. In order to continue to grow and to move and to shake, there are projects that are on the horizon, which include our jail. We will have to rent, build a new jail. We will also have to build a new courthouse, and our new, we need a new nine-one-one center as well. So what other funds exist in our county budget? Well, some of our major ones, the county schools are set out in a separate fund. DSS is in a separate fund. Our water and sewer, which is an enterprise fund, as well as our solid waste, is also an enterprise fund. Those two departments are treated as a business, and the reason they're called enterprises is because they're self-sufficient. Whatever money they bring in is what pays for their operation. So the general fund does not support either water or sewer nor solid waste. So all of the employees for those two divisions are housed in that fund, and fund accounting allows us to do that. So you can call my office and say, hey, how much money's in the water and sewer fund? I can tell you how many dollars are there, and that's why it's kept separate. Other things that are in major funds that we keep track of are our Capital Improvements Fund, our Economic Development Fund, and of course, our Rescue Billing Fund. Now, a lot of people question, how can I be sure if I'm a rescue squad and I bill through you all that I'm getting all of our money? Every dollar bill that comes in for rescue billing goes in the Rescue Billing Fund, and every month, it is reconciled with the monies that have come in with the third-party biller to ensure that every dollar that comes in is sent out. We keep nothing in finance for doing that work. The only administrative fee that you all pay is the administrative fee that the rescue billing agency charges us, the ones that actually do the billing for you all, and it is quite a job. The person that does that does a very good job at keeping all of that straight. Now, I, I have some handouts of this slide, 'cause you cannot see it. I, I recognize that this afternoon when I was going through that, so I made some copies. This will be very interesting to you all. You all are also in the Capital Improvements Fund, which means that back when Chris Lemp came on board, he thought that we should keep that, those capital improvements amounts separated so that we could keep track of them. The beautiful part about funds other than the general fund is they don't end. So at the end of a fiscal year, if you don't spend your money, it rolls over. And another important thing to note is if there is money designated for public safety, it stays in public safety. You all would know if it moves out of public safety, because it will take action of the Board of Supervisors. I cannot move money on my own. I can't even move money from one line item to another line item in capital improvements without the board deciding on that for, for me. They tell me what to do. So just to give you a little idea, right now, at the end of April, Fire and Rescue Capital Outlay stood at four hundred and thirty-four thousand nine eighteen fifty-four. The reason that balance is so high is because we had the ability to use CARES money to buy ambulances. That saved you all money. So whatever's left in that fund will roll over. Now, some of it has been kinda earmarked, and I don't know if you follow the Board of Supervisors, but Mr. Vic Ingram brought up about the brush truck for Mount Cross and for Cascade, and they wanted to make sure that they got their money and that kinda thing. So that's one of those items that come July, we have money sitting in ambulances that's not paying for ambulances. So they will have to vote to move that into the proper place. But this year, fire trucks were given to Tunstall, or contribution for fire trucks, I should say. Hundred and forty thousand dollars for Tunstall, a hundred and forty thousand for Braswell, and then under ambulances, Gretna Fire and Rescue did get ninety thousand dollars toward their ambulance. That has already been shown in the balance that you have, so that's already been removed. What makes this balance so high is the fact that we're still holding on to Cool Branch Fires money of a hundred and forty thousand and Cool Branch Rescues money of ninety thousand for an ambulance. So of course, that's in that four thirty-four figure that's gonna roll over. Now, that's still in that holding pot, but just know that that's kinda still out there, that was promised, and, but we're not sure where that stands right now. So then next year, you all will be receiving an additional two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So let's say, just for the sake of just an, an example, that we're not sitting at four thirty, we're sitting at six thirty. And so that figure, four hundred and thirty-four thousand's what's left. That's gonna roll over to be added to two hundred and twenty-four thousand. So that becomes your new capital, and you can see what Chris has asked for. Did Chris ask for a lot more? Yes. He fights for volunteers. He truly has a heart for that, and so he asked for quite a bit more, but this year was a tight year budgetarily. So I just wanted you all to be aware that your money's gonna be your money, and when it no longer becomes your money, you're gonna be aware of it. So it's not something that we can shift or what have you. So moving along, you do know that we did get some pandemic recovery funds, I will call them, because the first amount of money that we got was called CARES funding, and we received ten point five million dollars, which we shared with three of our towns. And some of the items that we used with that money, we bought a great deal of items for public safety, to even to little things like EMS supplies. We bought bags for our citizens. We also bought a tremendous amount of PPE, but we also bought software to track training. We also bought scheduling software. We bought lots of equipment. We bought some life packs and some equipment to go on the new ambulances that we bought, and three volunteer agencies got one of those ambulances, and then we also bought two for the county. So we, we put to use, really good use, our CARES funding. Now, our next amount which we're trying to get even today, I think we finally succeeded, is the ARPA funding, which is the Biden term, and that stands for the American Rescue Plan Act. And there is more leeway, they say, with this eleven point seven million dollars, but from a finance perspective, I'm not seeing the leeway. It's more geared toward getting money in the pockets of those most affected by those from the pandemic. So we are still looking at what we can use that money for, most of which we've, we will be putting in broadband, because that is something desperately that our county needs, and that is an acceptable use of those funds. This is another small one, but I kinda wanted to go through reassessment, 'cause that, it's a misconception about reassessment, that we just do reassessment so that we can raise everybody's tax. That is definitely not why we do that. We are required by law, because of the size of our county, to do reassessment every four years. And so what we're tasked with doing, or what we've tried to do since Mr. Smitherman's come, is to just evaluate things every four years, as opposed to every year, you really don't know, we're gonna have a tax increase or not have a tax increase. So we try to do the best we can at the beginning of that process. So four years ago, we thought we were getting a lot more revenue from other sources, i.e. MVP, pipeline. By now, the pipeline was gonna be piping us some money. Guess what? It's not done. We're not getting a red cent from the pipeline. So as each year has progressed, we've done a very good job of saving some money and putting money away, but this year's budget was by far the hardest one yet that we've done in the last four years, just because some things have not panned out like we thought. So I just wanted to give you an example of pre-reassessment. Let's say you have a hundred thousand dollar house. You go through reassessment, and your house becomes valued at a hundred and eight thousand dollars. If we leave our tax rate at sixty, sixty-two cent per hundred, that's an eight percent tax increase for you, even if we never change our rate, because your house is valued at more. We can't do that as local government. We have to advertise that that is a tax increase. But even though the rate didn't change, but you're paying more money, in fact, that hundred thousand dollar homeowner will pay forty-nine dollars and sixty cent more in tax if we left our tax rate as it is. That bottom blue box, which I know is hard to see, but if you do it the right way, we can only earn one percent greater in revenue year over year because of reassessment. If your reassessment goes up higher than one percent, then you either have to adjust your rate to reflect that, or you have to advertise for that tax increase that I mentioned. So in this same scenario, if I can only go up one percent on what you paid last year, that hundred thousand dollar homeowner would only pay six dollars and twenty cent more, which I would think everybody would be, oh, well, that's fine. Well, in order to do that, we would have to back our rate down from sixty-two cent per hundred. per hundred down to fifty-eight. So that's four cent. So a lot of times, that's what we're looking at. Is there some way that we can lower it to fifty-eight and use other means to make up the difference that we need? Or are we going to ask for a cost, a tax increase for our citizens? And we do try our very best, because that's not something, real estate owners are a great part of Pennsylvania County, but there's a lot of people that don't own real estate that take advantage of the services here. So we kind of want to spread that love around. So here is our menu of tax options. And our tax options are, we could do a cigarette tax, we're going to be selling marijuana, so we can have marijuana tax, plastic grocery bag tax, a transient occupancy tax, land use adjustment, we can look at that again. You could look at doing EMS hard billing. Right now, we have compassionate billing, so if people don't pay their bill, we're not going to go after them. A fire tax, we can look at additional meals tax. Before, we were set at four and a half percent. We could not charge any more than that, and now we can do what cities do. And I think there's, the top is nine, I believe. Maybe it's six. I don't know. I'd have to look at it. But in any case, that's an option, and lots of people come through the county that eat meals and would help us pay that bill, and they don't question the tax that they're paying. And then we also, on the referendum, we have a referendum going on the ballot this November to add an additional one percent to our sales tax, which will go to help fund schools, and we can use that for school debt. So if eight point seven million dollars of that nine point eight is for schools, and we get one percent, and we can pay that, whoop, whoop, we can do a lot with that, right? So these were our unfunded requests for 2022. We had a total of one million forty thousand four eighty-four, and you can see the list there of the items that were not funded, and they are still unfunded today. Not sure what we're going to do, but we have a quite lengthy Finance Committee meeting coming up for the Board of Supervisors to make some decisions about some of these items. And these are unaddressed county needs that we didn't put in our budget, but they're coming. We have three million dollars that we're committed to have to pay this coming year. Three million dollars. Not sure where that's coming from. So we're going to have to do some ciphering, to say the least. And of course, earlier, I mentioned some things that, not necessarily in the coming year, but things that we got to look at for the future, and that's jail construction, courthouse construction, school construction and renovation, which we may can use some of the money from the one percent, and then a new E-911 center. So I know I've overloaded you, but hopefully you learned some things about that. But I'll take any questions you might have.
I'll start. The three million in economic development that we have to spend?
Yes.
Why do we have to spend it? What is that all about?
We received two tobacco commission grants, and tobacco commission grants are dollar for dollar. So we put in a dollar, they put in a dollar. So we have one at the Berryhill Mugga site, and our share of that, I need to back away from that, I'm loud, I think is one point two, one point three million. The rest of it is at the Hurt Park. It may be vice versa. But, yeah, so I think it's one point five or six at the mega park for grading, and then we're grading a site in Hurt, and that is one point two, one point three, and that is what we'll have to pay this coming year for that.
So Kim, I have one question. You said the volunteers were getting one point eight million dollars, like a little small sliver of pie out of the big pie. So what's your total for public safety? What's your total budget for public safety?
Their total budget is about three point two, so, which includes you all in there.
Right, so you're getting about three point two million dollars, the volunteers are getting about one point eight. Now, public safety, I know it includes, you know, you got, we got the rest of the group and the medic one, two, three stations, which is good, do a good job. But does that fall into dispatches, 911 center?
No. 911 is a separate.
Right, okay, I got you. Thank you.
Kim, I have a question. So the, we had the CARES Act money, and now we have the ARP or whatever it is coming from the Biden administration, which is estimated to be eleven point seven million. Will the towns be getting another portion of that, you think?
They're getting direct aid from the federal government, so we won't be sharing the eleven point seven with our towns like we did originally with the ten point five.
Okay.
Excuse me. All of, will public safety be getting in it in eleven point seven million, or will it just go straight for businesses or?
Chris is buying for some of that. He sent us, he has definitely sent a list of some of the things that he's looking at. One of the items that may be included in that is a new CAD system, which is quite expensive. So that's one of the things, public safety might not directly impact you all, but it will on the fringes, because of course, you all run through that CAD system, so.
I got one more question, Kim, I'm sorry. So the CIP, I know it's been added to the agenda to discuss the Cool Branch funding. So the CIP funding for the ambulance and the fire truck, that is still there, it's just waiting to be approved to pay out?
Correct.
Okay.
So Kim, to follow up on that, the CIP money, if it's not spent, it stays there?
Correct.
For a rollover.
So what would the county, what would the Board of Supervisors have to do to take money out of that fund and use it for something else?
They would have to vote on that.
So just be, it would be a vote of the Board of Supervisors?
It would. And usually, they don't take those things lightly. All of that is brought up at a Finance Committee meeting. They discuss it at length before they make a decision like that. But at the end of each year, they'll get a listing of this is what's there, and like in this particular instance, we already know we got to move money for the brush truck and for the fire truck out of that ambulance line, and so that's already on my list to make sure that they're aware of that, and they'll vote to do that in July.
So every, every year, I mean, if this money is not spent, is there a cap on the rollover? Or it just, for, I'm talking just for the volunteers and public safety, is there a cap on that money? How many years or how much is in the account?
If it's there, it's there.
So it stays earmarked for public safety for, no matter what?
The only way it can change is if the Board of Supervisors changes it. And so each year, you know, if you get a budget, you're only going to see, oh, we only got two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars this year, but that's not necessarily what you have, because I don't budget those carryovers, because I don't know what they are. I used to do that, but it got really tedious when I thought in February, there was going to be five hundred thousand, and then it ended up only being three hundred thousand, and then it looked really inflated, and then I had to say, but you really didn't have that. And so it's best not to put those carryovers in there, to overinflate the number. So it's only new money that's put in there, and then the rollover comes over in July.
Question, another question. The, you said something about the county could only raise its revenue by a certain percentage year over year?
Yes, it's one percent. Well, one percent when you go through reassessment. When you go through reassessment, you can only earn one percent more than you did the prior year before reassessment was enacted. So it's just that one time every four years. If you experience growth, we have not really experienced growth greater than, say, one percent, and I think that's the state's way of saying, you know, normal growth is about one percent a year. So we don't want reassessment to overinflate the number without your citizens being aware of what you're doing.
So for clarity, we can increase ten percent, twenty percent, or a hundred percent, but the caveat is without a public hearing. So we would, if it goes up by two percent, we don't want to adjust the rate, we would have to advertise that as a tax increase.
And that is a completely separate public hearing from the budget. So on those reassessment years, if we increase the tax, there's a public hearing for the tax increase, there's a public hearing for the county budget, there's a public hearing for the school budget. So there's three public hearings in those years, if we do have a tax increase. There have been some years that we didn't. We roll back the tax. So you can see our list of tax amounts, they go up and down and up and down and up and down, and it's because of that, during your reassessment period.
I understand that the schools will be paid for in 2034? Okay, is that on schedule? Is that what was projected when this bond referendum was passed?
Yes, it is exactly where it's supposed to be. You know, we had about twenty million dollars that we kept saying we kicking the can, and we didn't have permanently financed, and it was a big to-do because we were waiting for literary funds. And that was because that money was supposed to give us two percent. The interest rate was going to be two percent, it was going to be really great, and so we waited, and we rolled those construction notes three separate times before we actually permanently financed. But our Board of Supervisors paid down five million dollars of general fund monies that was in the rainy day fund, so it was as if we had paid principal on those notes all along, and so we only permanently financed fifteen million.
So that money came from a rainy day fund that just got us on schedule?
The fund balance. But yes, because of that, it put us kind of in a precarious situation, because you have to have so much fund balance on hand. And so we paid down some debt, we paid cash for our pet center instead of actually borrowing funds for that. And so because of that, you know, our fund balance had gotten down pretty low. So we've made a concerted effort to increase those funds every year and try to budget more tightly so that we can have some leftover funds.
Taking money out of a rainy day fund to catch your school bonds up and paying cash for a pet center, that seems questionable to me, but thank you for your answers.
So Kim, I think what you said maybe has changed some, but at one time, we just basically paying the interest?
We were.
School bond loans?
We were.
We're just paying the interest, nothing on the principal?
Which I should, correct, on just those twenty million. The rest were already always permanently financed. And I will say, at the time, you know, you make a decision based on the time that you're in. Now, I've been here a very long time, so it was a good decision because it showed, hey, we're trying to do the right thing and pay what we should have been paying all along.
Right, so that's what you're doing now, right?
And so we're paying what we're supposed to, and everything's permanently financed. We did not wait on literary loans, they didn't come around, but we were able to lock in a rate of like two point one percent, which was just over what the literary loans were going to be anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add to Mr. Sellers' comments. When we passed the school bond referendums, I believe we were supposed to raise taxes thirteen cents, correct, Kim? Twelve to thirteen cents?
It's something like that, I can't remember exactly.
And they never raised the taxes to pay off the bond debt. So for years, probably since 2008, we've been scrimping and saving, and I agree that taking the money out of the rainy day fund, it was probably hindsight, we probably could have made a better decision, but also keep in mind that they never raised taxes to pay off that bond debt. So you have to applaud Kim's expertise on keeping our budgets fairly level, and we haven't had to raise taxes in four years. So I think, I think our Finance Department's been doing a great job, and we're finally seeing some light at the end of the tunnel.
I promise you, I was not questioning the Finance Department, and I appreciate your comments on that, but I was not questioning you, Kim.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry if it seemed that way.
No, not at all.
I just want to give some clarity, because like I said, they never did raise, that's a substantial tax increase to pay off the development that we have.
Now, Kim, I got another question, and you may have already answered it. My wife says I hear what I want to hear sometimes, but, so for clarification for these guys, because it's going to come up under our unfinished business for the CIP apparatus rotation replacement, I know that was some of the questions in our last meeting. So the way the new rotation is going to work, you know, the fire trucks are going to be on a scheduled, you know, rotation, I mean, I have a copy of it right here, but as far as the ambulance, it's going to work off a point system. So our point system, we brought the question up, but what if we had nobody that met the points that year for an ambulance, to acquire the funding for an ambulance, and we wanted to keep that money, you know, in the volunteer system or in the public safety system, so we could roll those funds over in the CIP. But since they're technically earmarked, can they be used for anything else other than the ambulance?
No, they can't, but I will, I'll tell you this, if Chris Lemp knew today, and he's getting ready to go through budget negotiations with us, and he wants two ambulances for nobody that's going to get one, we're not going to give it to you.
Right.
We're just not, because we can't afford to. If you saw my presentation, we never have enough revenue to cover the expense that we have. It's just, it's the nature of the beast, as it were. And even when we raise taxes, it's never enough for that one more ambulance or that one more thing, whether it be public safety or not. And then you have to decide what takes priority, what needs to be priority. And thank goodness, I'm not the one making that decision, because this is not my budget, just so y'all know.
So I would make that decision, and the way that we endeavor to be, and the way that we set out four years ago, and we held very well to for the majority of the four-year period, is we would project that on average, we need to sock away, let's just say, two hundred thousand dollars a year for ambulances. So in our pro forma for the next four years, we will budget, you know, it's a fictitious budget, it's not one they'll approve, but in our four-year pro forma, we would plug in eight hundred thousand dollars for ambulances. Just like in our pro forma for the previous four years, we stuck in?
Reassessment.
How much would, oh, reassessment's a great example. We stuck in two fifty a year for four years, so that when it came reassessment time, we wouldn't be trying to come up with a million bucks all at once. And it worked for year one, it didn't work in year two, it didn't work in year three, and by the time it got here, we ended up spending a lot less money. But the other example is the Economic Development Fund. We pledged to ourselves to stick seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in our Economic Development Fund, and we did it in year one, we did it in year two, we dropped off to maybe five hundred in year three, and we did zero in year four, and that's why we have a hole right now to fund a three million dollar obligation that we made previously. So we will forecast to pay for all those ambulances in our four-year period, but it will be year to year that we appropriate that money, and that's based upon revenue. Our big hole in our revenue in this past four years was absolutely MVP. It was over a million dollars a year we were anticipating, and it blew us out of the water. Were there any other things that blew us out of the water?
Oh, the power plant.
We lost the Hurt Power Plant this year. That was a fifty million dollar hit on our tax base. We also lost, and you guys can relate to this, the Regional One debacle four years ago. The day we approved our four-year plan, it seemed like we woke up the next morning, and we got a call that said, by the way, we're going out of business, y'all are on your own. And we ended up, we ended up doubling or tripling our spend in EMS because of that change.
And the pet center was being run off.
Oh, yeah, and that's right. We anticipated the pet center being run by outside agency, they failed, we had to put our own money in. So from year to year, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're trying to, we're trying to intelligently plan in four-year intervals. And if we do that, even if we sock away two hundred for ambulances in year one, and no one on the schedule comes up in year one, as long as it gets appropriated, it's going to roll into capital, and it will be there for the next time. If it's not appropriated, there's nothing to rollover.
So to that, before you go, I'm trying to get some discussion now that may avoid some discussion later when we get to that point in the agenda. Correct me if I'm wrong, I heard y'all say that with Board action, Board Supervisor action, that rollover money can be moved to another line item to be used somewhere else with Board action. Is that right? Okay.
I didn't understand the rollover part.
The CIP money that rolls year to year?
They can take ambulance money and use it for something else.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can't spend ambulance money even on a fire truck unless the Board says, I make a motion to move money from ambulance to fire truck.
Last month, that was a big discussion about, okay, if it rolls over, where does it go? And who can touch it? Who can build it? Did I answer that question? Thank you.
You know, capital items will always endeavor to rollover. We've tried to, we call them carryovers. Every year, we've tried to reduce carryovers as much as possible unless they are things that, what word am I using? Their longevity is multi-year. The project is multi-year. If, I'm trying to think of a department to pick on, if the solid waste, no, that's not a good one. If Chris Lemp said? If Chris Limp says, I need twenty thousand dollars for uniforms and he only spends ten thousand for uniforms, probably not going to roll that over. That's an operating cost.
So can, can, can money be moved from capital improvements to operating costs, like you were just talking about?
Technically, yes, that would be a, not a best practice and we would strongly advise against it and I doubt the board would do it. But in the black and white answer, yes, it can. Should it? No, it shouldn't.
And just to give some clarity, you know, I said that funds didn't, didn't end, they always went on. The only two exceptions to that is schools and DSS. They cannot have fund balance at June thirty. So whatever money they have on the books at the end of the year, it comes back to the general fund. Last year, we got roughly three point five million dollars back from the school system. But we're going to get a letter in July that says, hey, we gave you this money back, but we need it for ABCD and E. So yes, it ends, but I've never known a board to say, no, we're not going to give that back to you. Because they always have to tell what they're using the money for and that kind of thing. So I didn't want somebody to be watching tonight and say, wait a minute, we have to give our money back. But it's just those two funds, the other funds, the money stay intact. Now, as far as, like our solid waste and our water and sewer funds, they have capital items that will also roll over as far as budget is concerned. But their operating money is just like a regular operating budget, just like the general fund, and it goes away. So they have a new budget every year to work off of too. It's just capital items we let them carry over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you answered what I initially was getting at, the rollover.
Any other questions?
Yes. Two quick ones and a not-so-quick one. The, the tax options, you showed up here a little while ago, those are options that are allowed by the state of Virginia, right?
Correct.
And fire tax is a real estate ta, a property tax, correct?
It is, it's just designated. So if you say, we're putting a fire tax on, it can only be used for fire safety.
But there are restrictions as far as, something about revenue generating enterprises like, there, there's something about that fire tax that is affected by the revenue generated by the agencies that it benefits. Here we go, I know he's, he knows what I'm talking about.
So there's a difference between fire and EMS. A fire tax cannot be used to support EMS because it is a revenue generating business. But a fire tax can buy every fire truck that we ever need in this county. It can buy every air bottle, turnout gear, supplies, hose. If it goes to fire, it can be paid for by the fire tax, but no EMS can.
Okay. And the last question, a little bit off topic, but there was discussion about the schools, the school bond and the taxes. If we issue another bond for say, a courthouse or jail, can a tax be included in, in that bond that's dedicated just to pay off that bond?
It would be, it would be precisely like a school bond, a general obligation school bond. Which means if we tell you all day long, if you pass this tax, it's going to cost you thirteen cents and you don't raise the thirteen cents, then there's nothing to hold you to it. So it'd be the same way for a courthouse or a jail. It'll be a general obligation bond. And while in the, if, if we did a referendum, do you want to bill, spend nineteen million dollars for a new jail? You know, we can't put in there, if yes, your taxes will go up five cents, you can't do that. You have to just call the question. Now, we can publicly advertise that if we build a new jail, your taxes will go up five cents. But the Board of Supervisors doesn't enact that, it's just talk, which is what we ended up doing with school bonds.
So you can't have a jail tax on your real estate tax bill? Okay.
The only thing I know about that can have its own revenue source is fire.
Is what?
Fire, on the, on the, on the real estate tax. Now, the one percent, you know, it specifically says, do you want to raise sales tax one percent to fund, it may say forty-five million dollars worth of school improvements or whatever it is. And then that one percent tax will be tied to that issuance forever. But in the, on the general obligation of real estate revenue, you cannot do that.
I'm done.
I think Mr. Smith may have answered this question, I may have missed it. But now, going back to the fire tax, you said it would, would that be in a, in a lump sum? Or would it go back to each department locality or? I know you said it would buy every fire truck and every fire hose, you know, everything we needed, but, you know, I couldn't.
Yeah.
I know Mr. Andrew was asking a question, did it have to go back to the localities?
No, so if it's collected and cascaded, then stay in cascade.
Okay.
It, it becomes a county five percent tax and then it is used by the Board of Supervisors to pay for fire concerns in every jurisdiction of the county. You know, if you did it that way, I mean, you probably could do it legally, but you end up exacerbating your existing problem. Is the ones that have money, will get more money and the ones that don't, will not.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing this commission under the hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name, district and an audible tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the commission more than once during the hearing of citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a body, not to an individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit, shall be given speaking priority at the next commission meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We're checking to see if anybody's signed up at this time. We have no one signed up, thank you. Fire and Rescue Association reports, Chief Neal, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Just a few things from the last meeting. We discussed at the Fire Association meeting, Ronnie Fowler, nine-one-one dispatcher. So we looked, and I think it was brought up here, I don't know if y'all have voted on it, but it was brought up here basically right now on a fire, a working fire, when four departments or three departments are dispatched, CCOM with dispatches. And you go to channel three, which is a regular CCOM channel. And you sign on, you know, like fire two thirty ones in route. Used to, we'd go straight to TAC four, which is the alternate channel for those who you don't know. And that's basically the way your fire tech, your fire grounds is run on, on channel four, okay? Or channel five, whatever TAC you put you on. So what we changed was when they dispatch you, your incoming unit station, you know, whatever, one, two, three, four, responding to keep the traffic off the fire TAC channel. We set up to sign on and route on channel three, which is a regular CCOM channel. We get on the scene, we sign on scene, channel three, and then we switch over to channel four. This is one of the things that, that they brought up and the reasoning for it is, say for example, we have a working fire, say Blas gets out first, they got people inside of a burning house and you got the second, third, fourth D agency coming in. And you know, you got fire trucks riding on that channel, hey, this truck's on the scene, or this truck's on the scene, or this truck's in route. You might have a guy inside trapped or just beginning to go into a house and you got fire trucks still signing on or leaving, coming to you, this clears this TAC channel, you know, for fire tax. So I don't know if y'all was involved with that, but they want me to bring it up.
Quick question about that, if you don't mind, just something popped into my head. So will Command have a radio on both channels three and four?
Yeah, he's going to have to have somebody with him, he's going to have to have a radio on both sides, yeah.
Okay, that was my concern was if they're approaching, they're going to ask for an assignment on four, but if Command's on.
You know, and, and we tried it all on like channel four, but I mean, it's a zoo, I don't see how professional you are, it's a zoo. When you got four volunteer fire departments going to one fire and say you got, I don't know, we end up with thirty-five, forty people on the scene, you know, between the four people. And you got a pile of people talking, the trucks talking, and plus you're trying to work the fire scene through that channel and it makes it hard. So we're doing this to help, one, for the safety of the people in a burning house and two, you know, to sort of separate the, the talk, you know, from this channel to that channel. Yeah, it is a good question, it's good to know who you got coming and when to get there.
Was any consideration given in that to using channel nine, the simplex direct line of sight channel for fire ground operations?
Yeah, we've talked about that, but it's just like what you just said, it's going to put you running three channels. Now, you may have to, you know, I know we use channel nine like in Brockway and, and Entertain, Morgan Oaks and some of these companies got metal boxes, buildings and y'all run into it too. It won't pick up, your channel three and four don't pick up. You got to have a short talk channel, you know, but that's a good question. All right, any other questions on that? Any, Ben, you got anything on that?
No, I just, the channel nine thing real quick though, CCOM can't monitor that, right?
Right.
So I'd just be careful how we use that.
Right.
For ground operations, because, you know, Bedford was a good instance, there was a Mayday call, Command never even heard it. If it hadn't been for the dispatcher that called it, they didn't even know they had a Mayday. So I would just be careful if we look at that option.
Yeah, it is something if you just got truck to interior or something, you know, like in one of these factories, but it don't get out, you know. Okay, look, the other thing is, and I ain't trying to beat the dead horse to death, and these ones representing here tonight, same way pretty much what I've talked to. So we still are looking at the code of ethics. Now, we met, the Fire Association has met twice on the code of ethics. This is drawn up and basically everything on that code of ethics, we already do, okay? I mean, we basically already do. I mean, I got somebody sexually harassing somebody, I got somebody's on somebody because of the race, religion, gender. I got somebody showing a tail, I got somebody show up drunk, you know, not representing that department. I mean, we're going to handle them, we have. I mean, I've, I've got rid of them for stealing, I got rid of them for sexual harassment, social blogging. I mean, we've had all kinds of crap and I know a lot of y'all have too. And we handled that, if we didn't, we wouldn't be in business today. Ain't no way in the world we'd run all these years and any of y'all leave if we didn't look after it. Now, the thing we look at is our officers, that's why you got some officers, one to run scenes, two to look after people and three, you work for stuff like this, and you got a board directors, okay? And some of y'all sitting up there on board directors. So if I got a problem as a chief and the officers, I can't handle it myself, I'm going to bring this person in front of my board of directors. I got nine board directors. And I'm going to say, look, this person's done this, this and this, what do you recommend? We put him on probation, we suspend him, or we dismiss him. And we've dismissed people. Now, you know, everything in that code of ethics that they put out, and I know it was a draft, I, I agree with pretty much and we basically could add it to our bylaws or add it to our, our list when we bring a candidate in, this is what you got to follow. The last line is one everybody has got a little bit of issue of and, and it don't really define it. But if I got a guy that's chewing, chewing tobacco on a fire truck and ain't supposed to be, I mean, I don't feel like I got to call Chris Limp and tell him. If I got somebody does something minor, and I don't think it's meant like that, but he don't say. You know, it says, you know, it didn't mention sexual harassment. I understand that, I mean, that's if I go ahead and shoot somebody, I got a guy robs a bank, I got a guy sexually assaulted somebody, they sexually assaulted a patient back of my ambulance, I got Joe Blows got a DUI. I mean, I got enough sense to know that we're going to handle him and we do. And any of them sitting like that is going to do the same thing. So I, the, the thing that we want is the bottom line, we draw this line, what do we have to report and what not? I mean, I, I don't know, I really don't know why the last line's in there, okay? And, and I understand what they're saying. Now, again, I look at it this way, there's no not to them, but you've got, what, thirty employees working for public safety now? You know, I don't know, you got three medic trucks and, and a car down at Java. You know, and they got to be responsible for the people, they the ones got to answer directly to the public safety directors, you know, Chris or Mike. I would think, they got to answer to somebody. My people answering to my officers and my board of directors of the fire department. And they do where you work, right? Down with life saving crew and the city is like that, ain't it, Duffer? So are you the public safety director in the, in the city?
No.
No?
Fire chief is.
Ha, okay, well, okay, you in the fire chief line. All right, my question, and you won't hear last meeting, and I asked Brian Fox and I asked you the same question. So in Danville, a Danville rescue, if you have an issue, and y'all have them, trust me, just like we do, do you handle it within your department or do you have to go to city council, or public safety director in the city and hand this person to them or inform them that you had this issue? Do y'all have to do that?
Well, we have a human resources department. We have a human resources department that handles that.
But that's within your fire department?
Right.
Right, with your chief.
Well, no, it's with, it's through the city.
Through the city, what do you have, Brian?
To what?
Ours is, ours is handled internally.
Handled internally, okay. And I'm just saying that, I'm not, I'm not knocking out public safety, but I'm just saying, we need to take a hard look at that. I mean, I, you know what I'm saying, I mean, there's so many loopholes in there.
And that's still, that's in draft format still.
Right, it's in a draft, but somebody, I won't use the word, but is after somebody or this and that and other, then they do this, do that, it's not real clear. And our, our group has a problem with it. So I just make it clear on the code of ethics, not that we not supporting making the people do what it's supposed to, we got to do what it's supposed to. Okay, so that's all I say on that. The third thing that I want to mention, and, and Kim has left, she's done a good job on, on her reporting. There's a couple of things, I'm just going to put this like that for you, okay? And I know, and I got to bet money, Kim Meeks or Tim Duffer, Peanuts, some of them, even you in the city, you really know what goes on, how much calls you run, how much mileage you got on stuff like that. I'm not saying the rest of you don't, but you're not in these trucks driving as much and that's why I want to bring this up. So at the end of the day, the ambulance CIP funding, okay? And they drew this up and I don't know who all was involved doing it. We would like to see, in, in my opinion, it's not going to be advantage technically for this one over that one. But at the end of the day, it used to, you know, in the old days, you come to the Fire Association, you got two departments request a truck, we send it to the board supervisors. Okay, so the Fire Association's been totally deleted out of the picture now, okay? After twenty-five plus years, it's been totally deleted out, it comes straight to the commission, okay? But we got in here and, and we had no input in this, trust me. You got to have forty-five points to be eligible for CIP funding, okay? Forty-five points, and I, I mean, I know you got to start somewhere. So I go look at this, it says last funded year you got money, you get a point, okay? It says for the age of your vehicle, every year old, you get a point. It says your engine hours, you get a point for every hundred hours. It says you get three points for every hundred calls. And I'm just saying, I don't know if it's forty-five is the right number for this. I mean, I, I would like, we would like to just see revised it, whether it goes back to thirty-five or thirty-eight or forty. And I'm going to give you an example, and I'm not politicking for nobody, because Gretna just got a new truck and, and the counties give out, what, four ambulances? I mean, we got some ambulances in the county, ain't but ten of us, okay? And it's not really but three right now, really need one, three or four in the next rotation or two. But I'm just saying, for example, it's a truck in the county right now, that's a two thousand and nine, okay? So it's twelve years old, so you give them twelve points, okay? A truck, they got a truck money five years ago, you give them a point, so that's five, that's seventeen points. You got one point for every hundred hours, truck's got six hundred run hours and that gives them nine points, that's twenty-six. This truck run five hundred calls last year, that's a heck of a whole lot. Ain't many trucks in this county run five hundred calls, I can tell you. Gretna's got a heck of a call volume, Blas got a heck of a call volume. We run at Ringo a lot, you got Brazel and Tumstall run a lot and Chatham runs a fair amount. But I'm just telling you, if one truck runs five hundred calls, that's a whole lot of calls, okay? And you get three points a call, that's fifteen points. I'm just saying what I just told you and plus this truck's got ninety-five thousand miles on it, okay? So I got a truck's twelve years old, I got a truck's got ninety-five thousand miles on it. I got a truck running five hundred calls a year. I got a truck's got six hundred run, run hours on it. And you know what, it totals forty-one points. So if they came to this meeting next year, they got forty-one points, they not even eligible to even ask you for a truck. Unless they re-box it. And it says, if you get re-boxed it, you get five points. And trust me, you don't want to re-box one, I re-boxed one, okay? I done one in fourteen, it was eighty-five thousand dollars. Re-boxing now is going to run you a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, okay? And they got to put new floors in them for these hundred and thirty-eight pound striker stretches. It's got to meet all the OSHA guidelines, which is your safety harness and stuff, they got to redo the walls on side of these trucks. And I ain't being a smart tale, I'm just telling you facts, okay? So I, you know, we would like to see, I mean, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a while that a lot of people can come up here and ask you for ambulance on a forty-five point minimum. You know, I know you in Danville, when you see a lot of this stuff, I don't know. I know you in Dambal, and you see a lot of this stuff, I don't know how y'all rate y'all's, but you probably don't run a lot of trucks over a hundred thousand miles, I wouldn't think. I know you got some to add them, you know, I know Gretna, Chatham's had trucks, what, Ben, a hundred and thirty, forty thousand mile?
Last one replaced was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand miles, so, you know, and you're trying to better your equipment, better your safety for your people, but I just, I would just like to see that CIP, for CIP, then points at least be looked at. I mean, you gonna have to work hard to get forty points, to be honest with you, but I would like to see that re-looked at. I mean, if I came to you and had a truck twelve years old, almost a hundred thousand miles on it, and it was running five hundred calls a year, that truck's not in line to be replaced, I don't know what would be. You know, I really don't. Okay, my second thing is, and Kim touched on this, uh, and I think, I think David touched on it a little bit too, and this is just FYI, and going forward, I'm telling you, okay? And, and, and I know the budget's tight and this and that and the other, and I know Ronnie and them look ahead, a four-year plan, David mentioned a four-year plan, but I'm telling you, Danny Road, okay, we just, we got money in nineteen, okay, for a fire truck. We bought a truck which we thought was good for area, and we got some discounts, we paid some cash on the truck, got some discounts. Total, bottom line, that truck listed four eighty, okay? That's a four-man, four-door, five-man cab, fifteen-hundred pump, a thousand gallon tank, fourteen-thousand-dollar LED tower in the top, uh, freight line, I mean, yeah, freight liner, Pierce truck, it's a nice truck, okay? It wasn't the highest dollar truck you buy, but it's a nice truck, okay? That was in two thousand and twenty when I ordered, I got it in twenty-one. Now, I won't be sitting here, I can promise you, cause where y'all, they got it laid out to get the fire trucks, Ringo's next money's due in twenty-thirty, so we won't even get a dime for fire truck money for another nine years, okay? And I could run a thousand calls a year, or twenty calls a year, it's gonna be the same thing, and it's more people falling into that category. I can promise you, I had a guy come by my station yesterday, sells fire trucks, he was on a twenty-twenty-two, fifteen-hundred pump, thousand tank cab over, that truck's six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, okay? I just bought one for four eighty, Blair's about five thirty, Dean's cab over, but I'm just telling you, any of these people here are buying new trucks, and they know what I'm talking about. So, I'm just telling you, let's look forward, Danny Road, a fire truck increases eight percent every year, technically, and you dealt with it with amelances, and Ben, y'all know what I'm talking about, eight percent each year, okay? So, I'm just looking at Mike Neal, if Ringo, when it comes twenty-thirty, and whoever's left in that living, or we still got a fire station down there, I'm looking where I bought a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar truck this year, I'm looking at that truck in twenty-thirty being seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? The same truck, you know? So, if we need to just go out and buy a plain Jane for pumping, you know, down at Action Truck Sales, they got trucks with three thousand gallon water tanks, so, you know, I'm just, I ain't being smart, but I'm just telling you, if you gonna get a truck like that, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, what it amounts to with a hundred and forty thousand you've given us now, and you've given us that for a few years, if you increase that eight percent this year, you're looking at increasing at eleven thousand, two hundred dollars a year. You know, I'm just saying that, I, I'm just saying, I hope today, if, if my department's gotta pay seven hundred thousand dollars for a fire truck, that the county can give me two fifty, uh, three hundred, I can't finance no half million dollars. Who, who can find a ma- finance half a million dollars? So, I'm just throwing that out there, putting your pipe to, to look at it down the road. The other thing is, and I actually talked to Casey a minute, and, and Mike Lee, and they do a good job, yesterday, we had ten calls, okay, at Ringo, we had ten rescue calls, and, and, you know, seventy percent's a magic number, and we ran eight, okay? We ran eight, that's eighty percent, so we done pretty good, volunteer, eight out of ten. The two I missed, and, and I know we're getting recorded and stuff, so the two I missed was in a mobile home court of a frequent flyer, and I can't say no more, uh, that we get called to a locked lot, and, and Casey and him's been down and talked to this person one time, y'all have the same thing in Dambal, it's called a frequent flyer, okay? And we have the same, I say crap, but at the end of the day, this person's got a bite on the leg, a bug bite on the leg, okay, and calls rescue, so we let the county run it, we didn't run it, tape one blank, we didn't run it. Medic three running, is a backup for Ringo, I got counted as a miss, and go down there, they got a refusal, okay? Hour and a half later, tone's going off again, go to the same location, bug bite, leg don't feel right. So, medic three running again, four was, those were my two missed calls, okay? But I'm just saying, I've already talked to them, and I think, you know, the board of commissioners, we need to keep up with, and they've been trying to do this, is keep up with some of these frequent flyers that run in our rescue squads in the county to death, it just ain't where we at. I know Ben and them have them up at Gretna, Blair's has them, I know Tumsle and Brazel, all, all of us have, you know, and that's something that, that we need to look at, and the public safety, they started looking at that, and, and like I say, they've already been on about one time, and it slowed way down. I mean, we was going about ten, twelve times a month, and it slowed down, ain't been before this month, and medic threes run all four of them for me, I've got four missed calls over, okay? But I'm just saying, at the end of the day, that's something we need to keep in mind, it's called accountability for what we do. Last thing I wanna say is, our next Fire and Rescue Association meeting is the third Wednesday in June, we meet at Chatham Fire Station at seven o'clock PM, and, and our fire chiefs, if it works out, if it's June or July, would like to in the next few months, I ain't gonna call your names, Bobby Lovett's not here, but we'd like to see the eight of y'all, if y'all could work it out, come over and meet with us one month, we'd be glad to have you. If you work it out, you let Dean know. I shut up. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
County staff report.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Chris would love to be here if he could, but he can't, and he apologizes for that, and he's just giving me some information to go over on his behalf. Uh, one is the volunteer recruitment form that, uh, is on the internet, uh, thanks to our public information officer at the county. I think we went over that last month, did we not?
Yes.
I think it's working well, we're getting, we're getting hits on it, and we're sending it to the fire chief in the appropriate district. The CIP survey, this is new, uh, Chris feels like we should, uh, contact each of the volunteers' leadership and have them fill out a short form on capital improvements. What, what would they need in the next four to five years? Uh, fire trucks, for instance, so that we can hel- help them plan for that, help the county plan for CIP funding. EMS billing best practices, there's a wide range of the percentage being collected by each volunteer agency regarding EMS billing. Currently, there are three, uh, agencies that bill through the county, a- as Kim mentioned earlier, that's Cool Branch, Callens, and Blair's. Uh, we all use the same billing company, uh, and we know what they do, we know their percentages. What Chris is saying is, survey the other volunteers, the other, uh, what, seven, eight agencies that run EMS, and see how their collection rates are. Is there something that we can all come together and, and do to collect more funding for each agency? The CIP apparatus rotation that Chief Neil spoke about, uh, it's in your packet, Chris would like some action taken on that, uh, it still needs to be recommended and forwarded to the board of commissioners. As Chief Neil said, there is a point system for the ambulances, the fire truck is on a yearly rotation. And finally, Chris is recommending to you that you recommend that all CIP funds be moved to support other fire and rescue capital equipment needs if it's not used, and we've discussed that tonight, I believe. If, if funds for an ambulance are not used, they stay in the system, and as Kim and Mr. Smithman said, I believe that's the case. I think he would want that support from you to the board of commissioners. Sounds like it's not needed, though, personally. And in your packet is, is the rotation that, uh, the committee has come up with, as long, as well as the point scale. And as Chief Neil talked about, um, this new change in the radio procedures that was done by a committee involving the Fire Rescue Commission member, not commission, association members, uh, communications, Ronnie Fowler, and, and myself, uh, so that, that's where that came from. That is in your packet also, to, as a standard operating procedures for that change, uh, it's exactly what Chief Neil spoke about and explained. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, the CIP apparatus rotation replacement plan recommendations. We had lengthy discussion and some motions last meeting, and it was tabled, um, so I'd like to ask that committee to, uh, give us an update where we staying with that, please.
Um, wait, Dan. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I, I don't know exactly when I was there, but I, I do wanna make some comments just based off of, uh, Chief Neil. I, I think too, you need to look at not just the hours, we put a, a formula in here for, for miles, uh, so, it says one hour runtime for averages for sixty miles, so if you don't have hours, you can still convert it, um, you know, so that may increase it, you can't just, if it says five hundred hours, um, then, you know, you're gonna get to the one point for every hundred hours. But if your ambulance doesn't have an hour meter, and some of the older ones don't, then use your mileage and convert it. Uh, so I think that would maybe, you know, increase the number. As far as the, the remounts, I was asked, kinda a question came to me, uh, out of the meeting, that, um, one of the things that you have to do is, you have to meet certain standards, you have to, you're required to get a power, a power cot, um, that is not correct. You do not have to get a power assist cot. You do have to meet the new standards, but that is not a power assist. Virginia code, I actually looked it up because it was a question, um, posed to me, Virginia code, um, EMS code, ground ambulance specifications, uh, ground ambulance must be commercially constructed and certified to comply with the current federal specifications for the Star of Life ambulance, U.S. General Service Administrative Code Triple K A eighteen twenty-two standard. Um, now, that's like anything else, you gotta look up standards. So, the GSA code, I looked that up as well, um, it states that a, uh, a litter fastener assembly, uh, shall be furnished. The installed litter fastener device for a wheel cot shall meet the performance requirements of the SAE J thirty twenty-seven, um, and it shall be installed by the manufacturer's recommendations. So, I did look up, uh, both Furno and Striker, they have a system that meets that compliance that is not a power lift. Now, you do have to do structural members to the floor, um, that is the case, they do have to reinforce the floor, uh, but most remounts that I've seen, that's part of the remount package anyway. So, and the question was brought to me is, well, that's thirty thousand dollars extra that you've got to add to an ambulance for a power cot. Um, the state of Virginia does not require that per the Office of EMS standards, so I would just kinda put that out there, and that's based off of what's on the current Office of EMS websites, um, guidelines.
Tim, one other question also about, um, mine just went blank, it was something else you and I talked about earlier today about those trucks, oh, about who can do the remount? Does it have to go back to the manufacturer's facility?
So, it does not have to go to the original manufacturer, so in other words, you don't have to send, uh, just say, um, a wheel coach ambulance back to Florida to have it ma- to remount it. It can go to anybody that is certified to remount ambulances, and most, in my dealings, most ambulance manufacturers don't do the remount theirself, they'll send it to one of their dealers, a lot of the dealers do it. So, it may be, there's several dealers out there that do it, I know some are good, some are bad, uh, if you get a bad one, then, you know, that's, it does put, uh, remounts can, if you get a bad dealer, can't put a, kind of a sour taste in your mouth. But if you get one that's, you know, a reputable company, um, then most of the time, they, they've, they've gotta meet the new standard. They're not gonna let one go out the door that doesn't meet the standard because they're held to that just the same as the manufacturers are. I did talk with one of the remount manufacturers, um, he says they do every, every brand, uh, that's out there, uh, and then all new ambulances that leave their, uh, facility, uh, have the new, um, standards for cot retention. Uh, that may be a power lube, uh, or that may be, uh, the simple, um, locking system. The people that are familiar with ambulances, the old, uh, old system used to have a horn that cradled the two front wheels, and then a lock that went to the side. That is no longer acceptable. It's gotta be, uh, under that standard, I, I couldn't print the SEA standards off because, uh, you have to buy the whole book, um, but if you go to some of the manufacturers, they tell you that that standard, it's a lot of rollover protection, this, this whole standard, uh, complies with how the cot is positioned in the truck, how the provider's positioned in the truck, uh, even how the straps are on the, the, uh, patient. That same standard actually recommends that you have a five-point harness on it, but, uh, you know, I can test, I, I can say that a lot of people don't use the shoulder straps, but that same standard says that too. So, that's all part of that standard. You know, I, I support the extra points for remount just because, um, in some cases, you're not gonna be able to, um, you're not gonna be able to get state funding grants. Uh, this formula, to be honest with you, is very similar to the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund on how they determine whether or not you qualify for an ambulance or not. So, it's not something that we just, you know, kinda thought up, in, you know, other committee members, we kinda use the, the fart committee's formula, when you apply for Rescue Squad Assistance, it's kinda the same, kinda the same formula. The only thing we did change was, I think they used mileage and we used hours. And the reason we decided to use hours is because how many of the ambulances now are sitting on fire scenes with two and three hours? That's engine runtime, that's not being counted towards the use of that vehicle. I mean, we've got, same with fire trucks, how many fire trucks sit at a fire scene for, you know, six hours pumping, no miles registered on the vehicle? So, we felt like hours was a better way to go, but we did put that conversion in there for the older vehicles that don't have hour meters. Most all new vehicles have hour meters, you may have to hunt through the menu on the, uh, on the, uh, vehicle cluster, but it does have it there, or you can take it to a shop, and they can hook a computer to it and tell you what the engine run hours are, so, um, that was kinda my, any of the other commissioners have questions about that? I mean, that's my feeling, uh, Ms. King, Ms. Meeks, if y'all got any more to add to that. So, yeah, the RSA grant does, I think they do. They do penalize you a little bit for remount, but we put the remount in case you were not able to get the grant. The, the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund does kinda, you know, they don't really have a way of setting the price. The way they set the price of what they're gonna give you, uh, and if anybody's probably done a grant through the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund, um, the max payout's not gonna buy you an ambulance. Even if you get eighty percent, it's not gonna buy you an ambulance. But they base that off of, um, different, they basically go out, do a state contract for a basic ambulance with steel wheels, through the, uh, government procurement process, and they base that number off of whether you get a type one, a type three, uh, or a type two. So, they have a set standard for each one. Uh, they do not have a current remount value, so that's why they kinda penalize you for that. Some grant hearings, when we used to set on them through the Western Virginia EMS Council, uh, actually, we gave them better points if they looked at that because it showed planning. But unfortunately, the state doesn't really have a, that I know of, and they, they may have changed since I've dealt with it last. But if you don't get a grant, here's extra points that you can, can get, um, to support that funding through the county procurement system.
So, it's my understanding the committee is good with what's been presented here tonight as far as the fire apparatus funding rotation and the CIP formulary for the ambulances that- Is that correct?
Well, Mr. Chairman, another thing I will state, and I may not have been included, but we have not officially met since the last meeting, that ad hoc committee. So you know, if it's, you know, I mean, it's up to you guys, but if it pleases the masses to, for us to table this another month and us actually sit back down one more time and just give it one more look over to make sure that the points where we have the criteria limit set at is correct, you know, I don't have any problem with that. I will reiterate what Mr. Duffer said, you know, we put a lot of work into this to make it fair, and we've really mirrored the, the CIP funding for the ambulances off of the state, off the RSFA. So it's not like we just pulled this out of, out of the air. You know, we, we got input from those guys and, and then, and I just got awarded a RSFA grant last year, so I've been through this and, and checked all these boxes. And it's a good chance, I'm not going to say it's always going to happen, but it's a good chance if you're going to get a grant from Rescue Squad Assistance Fund, then you're also going to meet this criteria. You see what I'm saying? It's not, like I said, it's not 100% guaranteed, but it's a good percentage that you're going to meet both criterias because they're so closely mirrored. So, but like I said, I will be upfront and honest. I mean, there obviously has been some other discussions, but as far as the actual sit-down meeting to review this, I, I don't think that's happened. And again, nothing, I know Mr. Slim's had a lot going on. He usually coordinates those meetings, and he's had some personal stuff going on, and then not passing the blame on him, you know, we're all on the committee, but.
So if, if you'd like, I'll entertain a motion to table it if that's what your, the committee chooses to do. It's up to you all.
I'll make a motion that the ad hoc committee for the CIP rotation be tabled for another month. And then we can meet with Mr. Slim again.
Uh, Mr. King?
I can, I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ben Meeks. If y'all would touch your buttons on your screen there and we'll.
Do we have any discussion?
Uh, to table it, there's not, I don't think you have any discussion when you table a motion, do you, Mr. Hunt?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, table is just a motion, a second, and a vote, and then that committee will reconvene. All right, so hit your, hit your motion button there. Mr. King, get you hit the second button there for me if you don't mind.
I'll get it again. I got you. It keeps coming up with mover on mine. I'm not getting the second.
The second, the second's up there now on mine.
You may have to hit the second. You seconded, you may have to hit the second.
Okay.
Do you want to hit the second? Yeah.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, if you would cash your ballot, please.
Are we voting on the tabling or the, on the motion?
To vote to table it. This is tabled for another month.
Where does it say that? This is just says CIP apparatus rotation.
There you go, it says table.
All right, CIP Cool Branch, Mr. King?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I talked to several of them from Cool Branch on the, on the CIP money that they had already ordered their trucks, but they hadn't, the funds hadn't been released yet. And I know they've had a lot of, lot of things going on between them and Franklin County and the, you know, Pennsylvania County and Franklin County and Mr. Smithman, different ones, they've been trying to work the issues out with Franklin County. But I honestly think they got involved, they, they bought, ordered these trucks, you know, they ordered fire truck and Cool Branch Rescue or ambulance before all of this took place. And you know, to, to hold them up, they've al, they already placed their orders on the trucks, and they've actually had to make the damn payments on them without any, any county funds. And I, I think we owe them that much, since we've cut them so much in the last, I mean, four months, five months since I've been sitting here, we've, every time we come to a meeting, we've cut them, cut, cut their funds. But I think they ordered in good faith and they ordered, you know, thinking they was going to receive the county money to help them out, and they did everything in the rotation that they were supposed to do. And I think we should award them their CIP money, and Ms. Kim said it was all, it was still in the budget. It was still not to be rolled over.
And I'm going to reiterate, well, fellow commissioner there, I've done a lot of talking to Cool Branch over the last 30 days myself, talked to Chief Madler last night down there at Cool Branch. I think they're in a tight situation. They've been put into this scenario that's not so much their fault, it's just, you know, the way, the way it's happening. And I, and I do think it's good for our county leadership to kind of settle the table there with Franklin, considering the service they're getting. However, that's not those departments' fault for where they, where they're, you know, where they're at and where the service they provide. So, and like Mr. King said, they, they had followed the process that's usually always been followed to get these trucks and kind of thought out of good faith the money was going to be there. And now it's locked, you know, it's, it's sitting in the CIP, and I guess they're waiting on some action between Franklin and Cool Branch. And it looks like, I've seen the media release, it looks like it's been a little bit of talks ongoing, don't know if that's a fix or not, but it looks like there's been some talks going on there. But I, I agree, I think we owe it to those guys to, to fund their CIP. And I'll just put it out there with the new funding criteria that we have set, this commission recommended to the board supervisors, their funding, starting July forward, whatever they decide to do, is going to be based just solely off of Pennsylvania County calls. So I think they fall in that tier two, which is $27,000 a year, you know? And so I'm not sure where the argument's going to be there, and I know there's insurance and other things, and I definitely agree that Franklin County needs to pony up some on their end, 100%. But I'm just saying, with the new recommendation on the funding, and that's a totally different subject than this, but I'm just putting that out there, it's going to be based just solely on Pennsylvania County calls, on where they fall to get that $27,000. So, and then it'll be on Cool Branch, I mean, on Franklin County to fund, you know, for their end. But again, back to the issue on hand, I think we owe it to those guys, like I said, they're, they're still doing a good job, they're still covering their calls, they're still providing that service to Pennsylvania County citizens, and they've been kind of put in a situation where they've ordered the truck, to cancel the order was $56,000. And so the truck, it was already being built when all this come up. The truck is on its way now, they've already made the first payment, and I'm speaking on the fire department, okay, I haven't talked much to the Rescue Squad leadership, but the fire department side. And they don't have any way to get any income. They're not on EMS agency, they can't bill. So they're a dead expense. So they have no way, and their donations have slowed down since all of this stuff's been going on between the two counties because people's concerned on, you know, what's going to come out of this, who's going to respond to them in an emergency. So I know some of their donations, according to the chief there, has really declined recently. So you can see they're going on a slippery slope of where they're going to fund and pay for the stuff. So, yeah, I, I totally agree, and I will vote for that if it comes up on the motion to release their CIP funds, at least recommendation to the board to release it.
Yeah, Mr. Angier, I met with Cool Branch several months ago when this budget process started, and, and we talked to Scotty up at the, at the Rescue Squad building, and he was telling us about how, how their funds, how their donations had actually diminished off since all this had started. And like Mr. Meeks said, they don't know who to support right now. They don't know who's coming to them. They don't want to give Cool Branch money if they're not coming, and if Franklin County is, if, you know, they don't know whether to make their donations to right now. So everything is just kind of at a standstill, and now, you know, like I said, they, they're strapped for money right now.
These arrangements were made before this commission was formed, and so we're looking at what, two years or so now that, that that money's kind of been in limbo? And I think it's time, the, the money's been appropriated, as I understand, it's been earmarked. I, I really think it's time to let it go. I know Cool Branch, I'm pretty sure it's taking delivery of their ambulance, so they're, they're making, they're taking money out of their, their own funds to pay for it and anxiously awaiting some, some money from the county. I would like to pass a motion to encourage the board supervisors to let that money go to Cool Branch, both, both agencies.
I second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Angier, a second by Mr. King, that we make a recommendation to the board of supervisors to release the appropriated money to the Cool Branch Fire and Cool Branch Rescue. Any discussion on the motion now?
Chairman, I'd like to say a few words. As the finance chair and also on the board of supervisors, we're fully aware of this issue, that there are some ongoing issues that I can't discuss at this time. And so this recommendation, whether it gets approved or not, the board and the finance committee will be making a decision on this, and I, I don't know if this, this will help or hinder that decision because, again, there's other issues that we can't address. And just, just so the committee knows, if nothing happens at the next board meeting, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that we're still trying to work out. And that's one of the reasons why this money hasn't been appropriate.
Thank you.
Does this committee need to go in private session to hear these concerns, or is it going to be help behind our back?
I'm not at liberty to discuss that with this committee, and again, it's something that the finance committee is fully aware, so is the board of supervisors.
But does that, does that, could we correct that by going to a private session and listening to those concerns? Would it help us in it? If it wouldn't, I, we don't need to be involved in it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not at liberty to discuss the issues that's going on with what we're, what we're having to deal with at the board level.
I, I don't want it discussed in public forum. Here, I'm saying that we need to do it in private.
I'm not, I'm not ready to discuss anything.
I'm asking, I'm just asking.
I would say no, because I'm not, I'm not the one that needs to discuss these issues. It's, it's an ongoing problem that the board has been dealing with since, what, two years now probably? And again, it's a lot of behind the scenes stuff that you guys are not aware of that I, I just, I don't feel comfortable discussing it in closed or open session at this point.
If we're here taking a vote on an item that y'all are not comfortable discussing, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Smithman, do we need to go into private session, or, or would that be out of line?
I would respectfully remind the commission that the board of supervisors has asked the commission not to delve into financial matters. And that the purpose, I wish we would talk more about figuring out how to provide better service with the people we have and not always talking about money and apparatus. I will correct the comments of the board earlier, that Cool Branch was well aware of the present financial situation before either the ambulance or the truck was ordered, and they're personally advised by me that that would be a very risky move to order that apparatus in, with the current state of affairs. The current state of affairs is that the board of supervisors of Pennsylvania County has pledged to match Franklin County dollar for dollar for everything they put into Cool Branch, and they have told us that their limit is $12,000 per department. And that's the end of what we can disclose as of this time in our internal negotiations, but externally, we have communicated that to Cool Branch and the public, that we are happy to match dollar for dollar every contribution that Franklin County makes. And Franklin County did increase their contribution from 10,000 to 12,000. But I again implore the commission to stick to its mission, which is to improve the service of this county and allow the finance committee and the board of supervisors that are elected to levy, collect, and disperse funds from the taxpayers. Leave that job to them respectfully. Thank you.
That answers my question, and I appreciate it.
But this, just so I understand, this is a recommendation to the board? So that's what we're voting on right now.
Yes, sir, and the recommendation is to how the board of supervisors chooses to spend money, and respectfully, that's not a recommendation that this board was created to provide. And the board of supervisors, through its annual budget process and, and other means, very publicly talks about and allocates money for all of these issues. And again, Cool Branch Fire and Cool Branch Rescue were well aware and advised that anything to do with apparatus in their department under the current situation, and it's been this way for a long time, would be at their risk, and they chose to take that risk. And Franklin County has not committed in any way to provide additional funding for apparatus. And right now, the board of supervisors' commitment is to match Franklin County dollar for dollar on their contributions to Cool Branch Rescue Squad.
I thought that we did make some financial recommendations with this committee, but maybe we don't.
Well, didn't we just recommend?
Pertaining to the budget, don't we make recommendations to the board of supervisors?
I just want to say, I thank Mr. Smithman for coming up and speaking, but I just want to put it out there, this is how I personally feel, discussing, he brought up a good topic, this board is to improve fire and rescue in this county. Well, if we let an agency go bankrupt because they bought a fire truck to replace a truck that was 26 years old to protect their fire and rescue individual, their fire department members, to respond to emergency calls in this county and as well as Franklin. And again, I understand Franklin needs to pony up, okay? We all understand that, we agree on that. And maybe it's out of line for us to discuss this, but I see that as very detrimental to improving fire and rescue in this county, if we're not there to kind of back these guys up. Again, I don't know dollar for dollar what their situation is. I just know their chief has reached out to several on this commission and expressed concern and asked, could we bring this up and, and discuss it? And again, it's up to the board, and I respect those guys to make the right decision, that's what we elect them for. But I feel like it, you know, in my eyes, this is appropriate for us to at least to discuss because it is talking about fire and rescue and where it stands in this county. I mean, if you have an agency, again, fire department doesn't have any EMS building. I know that from when we used to be just a fire department, okay? We pinched pennies, and we would have not been able to replace our fire truck until we merged with Rescue Squad and got some more income and different things like that, different opportunities. So, yeah, like I said, I, that's my take on it. I, I think it is, does obtain to the subject matter of improving and continuing the service of fire and rescue in this county.
But didn't we just recommend that Cascade and, and some kind of way, Mike Cross got funding, and we recommended to the board to release those funds?
Yes, and respectfully, that whole thing got hijacked. We had a process that we've used for many, many years, it's in flux. As we transitioned to the commission and as we transitioned to a replacement schedule, a, a citizen who happens to be a supervisor decided unilaterally to input a new procedure that had never been discussed with the board of supervisors or its finance committee, and coerced or otherwise convinced this board to take action that frankly was outside of its purview. And we bit our tongue and we worked with it, and luckily, the recommendations of that individual were in line with recommendations from the fire service and in line with the recommendations of the public safety director, so the board of supervisors didn't choose to make an issue out of that, because even though the process was not followed correctly, the result was the same. And going forward, we know there'll be a replacement schedule, and that type of interaction from the public to the board in an open comment period won't be germane anymore because we'll have a replacement schedule and take that subjectivity and political bent out of the equation. And that's why, you know, this replacement schedule's so important because we're truly getting back down to need. We're also projecting many years into the future when new apparatus is needed in particular departments, so those departments can save and also so the county can save. And I'll, I'll be very frank with you, I, my goal over the next four years is to increase the county portion of apparatus tremendously, multifold. Because fundamentally, we don't believe you should have to sell stew to get a fire truck. We need you to have a fire truck so you can protect our people. And we would rather you spend your energy on training and recruitment and response and let the county do the heavy lifting of paying for the really expensive stuff. That's a goal, and it's not one that I can stand before you and say that we're going to meet, but it's a goal that we will be developing over the next nine months before we present our four-year plan of finance next March, April. So there's a lot of things in flux right now as we're moving into a new way of doing business and, and honestly, moving into a period where the county carries a bigger load, and that's our goal. And, you know... And that's our goal, and, um, you know, we'll go through the growing pains as we get there and, and, you know, make sure everybody has what they need to be, uh, top performers in their communities, and the county wants to be a huge contributor to that individual success of every department.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to be upfront and honest, I guess a year, over a year ago, uh, we made a motion to send this to the board of supervisors, the elected officials, to make that decision. I'm not happy that it's dragged out for this long either, but I don't know the details behind all of that. So for that reason, I want to support the motion, and just want people to understand that, that we gave it to the board of supervisors, elected officials, and I, I think we should let them handle it wherever this goes.
Any further discussion? All right, no further discussion? This time, gentlemen, cast your vote. Mr. Sellers shows we're waiting for your vote, sir.
Pardon?
Says we're waiting for your vote, sir.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what, uh, Mr. Scruggs said.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kinda, sorry.
Yeah, I, I was just making the comment that we, as a committee, gave the board of supervisors a recommendation something over a year ago, to let them handle the situation with Cool Branch and Franklin County. Um, so I'm in the camp of just letting them follow that through to see wherever it goes, because none of us understand all of the legal talks that are going back and forth. So I'm just in the camp of, I'm not supporting the motion, because I think we should just leave it to the board of supervisors, the elected officials, to work through this with the lawyers and whoever else is involved in it, uh, to come up with a, with a solution.
And that's along the lines of what Mr. Scares and Mr. Smithman is saying?
Thank you, gentlemen. New business. Talked about the operational radio procedures, SOG. I think Chief Neil spoke to it in, in his report. Deputy Director Lee talked about it a little bit as he gave the county's report. At thi- at this time, the commission would need to take action to adopt that policy as presented from the association. So the, the motion would be to adopt the new radio SOG or SOP policy guideline that Chief Neil spoke about, and that Mike Lee spoke about also for on-scene responding to fire events, large-scale incidents of switching the channels and how they're gonna do that.
Oh, okay. Mr. Neil, is, is there anything in this, conflicts what you were talking about early, earlier in this SOG? Okay, so it's in line with?
Right, the Ronnie Fallon 911 dispatcher and, uh, Agri was med with it, we talked about it in the fire chiefs meeting, how we, what would be on channel three, and then when you would go to channel four or five, the fire attack channel. So there was an agreement with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion. I, I, I was unclear what you were saying, but yeah, I'd, I'd make a motion, we accept it.
Okay, very good, you got a motion?
Second.
Did she get a second?
Yes, second by Mr. Scruggs. Any discussion on the motion about the radio policy? Not done, cast your votes. Motion's approved, thank you. All right, this time we'll go to matters from commissioners, and I'll start with the Honorable Mr. Scares.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report this month, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers?
First of all, Mike Neil made a good presentation about possible flaws in the point system. And if I understood him correctly, all he asked for is to have the committee that recommended the 45-point system to take a closer look at this requirement. Uh, he wasn't asking for any action on it, he just wanted to go back and study it. And I respect him for asking that. Also, I think that the code of ethics that Mike asked for to be considered should be handled by each individual fire department and not public safety. Those are the two comments I have.
Mr. Angier? Mr. Meeks?
Uh, no, sir, I mean, I just, just wanna put it out there, uh, we have a hard job here, and so we're doing the best we can to make the best recommendations to the board. I know there's been some hard feelings, you know, throughout, um, and, and it's hard, and my position as a volunteer fire chief, but I do try to put the best interest in our volunteers and our public safety and our citizens first. I've been a volunteer for 11 years now, kinda been there and done that type thing, and so, uh, we have a tough job up here. So anybody, just keep that in mind, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Duffer?
Two things, uh, one thing that I, I brought it up before, but I think, um, when Kim talked about the additional funding, uh, I really think the county, the volunteers, need to look at their EMS billing. I know we compassion bill, and that's, you know, that's nice, but, um, I, I have a feeling that that just needs to be looked at a little, a little bit stronger. I'm not saying you need to take somebody to, to court, I'm not saying that you need to go after, uh, put liens, but I, I think it needs to be something that needs to be addressed or at least looked at, maybe to take it one step further. You know, each agency can make that decision, but I think it's something you ought to look at. Um, the other thing on the code of ethics, I, I, not to go against any commissioner, but the one thing that's different, I think, that we tend to forget is the reason they want public safety to know about it, and the only reason I know this is the, I've dealt with some of this stuff, is the county holds the insurance, and the insurance is who's gonna pay your claim. So that's one reason why they need to know about it. It's not saying that you can't handle your own stuff in your own department, that's great. But if it does escalate to a point where lawyers have gotta get involved, the county insurance is who's gonna pay that bill. Um, and I think that was one of the reasons why they wanna be notified. It's a lot of things that you need to do if something happens, and I'm not talking about small things. I, I know, Mike, you talked about the, the tobacco in the truck. I, I think that's not what the intent of that was. But if you have something that's major, that's gonna make the news, gonna be in the paper, that insurance company needs to be notified ASAP, like the day of. Because there's a lot of things that need to go, uh, that needs to happen, um, that they need to tell you about, uh, before it escalates. So I think that's one of the reasons why they want you to notify public safety. Now, I haven't read it, I need to read it, um, I can't, I, I don't remember the exact wording, I didn't have it here. Could it be tweaked, maybe, but just remember that the county is the one that controls the insurance, uh, so that's all I've got.
Tim, I was just saying, you read it, you said you ain't read it, so read it, okay? When you read it, I'm just saying we need to sort of draw a line, you know, what you say and what you don't have to tell them, okay?
Right, I understand that.
You just say if you get a DUI, the county has to pay you, pay your lawyer or something, like I've got a DUI on my Z71 pickup, going at 58, county gonna pay for me to get a lawyer? Is that what you say?
If it's involved, I'm pretty sure.
Our truck, they may get involved, but I drive my personal pickup, Pennsylvania County ain't gonna pay for me no lawyer.
I'd have to, I mean, we may need to check, but I went through part of the insurance process, and they cover you for certain things, even in your private vehicle. So that's what I'm saying, the insurance, the county insurance needs to be aware of what's going on if you have a problem. And I, I know from experience, you know, if you have a provider that does something, it goes downhill quick, and you need that county, you need that lawyer assigned to you ASAP, um, so.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I see it, examples of sexual harassment or DUI on a fire scene, or you involved in a 1050, driving my ambulance, and you blow the .9, or, you know, I got somebody out here who's feloniously assaulted somebody, uh, went and robbed a mini mart, you know? I mean, that's just common sense stuff that we, we would definitely let them know, and I just, it don't say anywhere you draw a line at.
Right, I'm not saying that.
What goes on, I mean.
Maybe it needs to be tweaked, but you asked about DAMBL. No, I don't need to know what happens with DAMBL Lifesaver Group, because they have their own insurance carrier. So I don't really need to know, but if we, if we provided their insurance, then yes, I would need to know. Because I've gotta be the agent to call that insurance company. So, that's the only reason, and I'm not saying it doesn't need to be tweaked, I'm just, I want people to understand why that's part of it.
Yeah.
You know, if he's in.
So, I, I mean, I'm just saying, we just sort of need to be in the middle of the war on what the chiefs know, or assistant chiefs or the board knows, on what we need to do, okay? I mean, for example, last year.
I'm gonna have to bring it back in, gentlemen, this is matter from the commissioners, I'm gonna have to bring this back in and let Mr. Duffer finish his comment.
Okay, Wes, fine.
Thank you.
I mean, I just, like I say, I think it maybe needs to be, you know, maybe tweaked a little bit, but just, you know, I just want people to understand it. The other thing too is, is some of these rules are for the public safety. Aren't we all part of public safety, volunteers and the career? Are we supposed to, are we gonna start writing policies for the career side versus the volunteer side? Is that, I mean, is that what we, is that what we're at, you know? Is the Fire and Rescue Association, is that what they want us to do? Or do we write a policy, or do we approve policies that are for public safety? I'm a volunteer, I'm also a career person as well. We all fight fire the same, we all run EMS calls the same, we all do everything the same. The difference is, is paycheck, I understand that. I don't get, you know, anything when I volunteer. So I just, are we all one, one system? Or are we trying to be separate systems? That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. King?
Oh, yes, uh, like I said, Fred, like I always said, thank you volunteers for everything that you do. And also to echo what Mr. Meeks said, we sitting here in a tough position. And actually, we hear a lot of, we get a lot of our information from, from the volunteers, from the Fire Rescue Association. We have, and we don't hear the other side of the coin a whole lot of times. And the only thing we can do is make the decision the best that we can when, when we get this information and try to get it out there and get it, you know, to where it's a kinda happy medium for everybody. But, you know, like I said, but, you know, Mr. Scares hears both sides, I'm just using you as an example, not singling you out, Mr. Scares, you know? But, but we hear one side, we, he hears both sides, we hear one side, and we try to make this decision to keep this whole system running. But, thank you for, thank you guys for what you do.
Vice Chair?
Um, now, just to keep, uh, of course, Mr. Smith, what he's going through, keep him in your prayers, and then I think Mr. Lovelace actually had another surgery, so keep him, you know, well wishes, uh, as well, please.
I've just got two things, uh, one, the volunteer recruitment online form that dates, gets submitted and gets sent out to the chiefs of the agencies, make sure you follow up on that. Um, that, that's a great tool that we haven't had before. So make sure when you get that, hit your inbox, make sure you follow up, 'cause that's, that's more members, and that's what we need. Um, second thing is, I sit on the STEMI committee for the SOVA, DAMBL Hospital and SOVA Martinsville Complex. And they wanted me to pass something on to all the fire and rescue, I passed on to our folks in DAMBL as well. If, if your truck is out there, whether it's a basic-level truck or an ALS truck, if your monitor shows STEMI, and you're going to DAMBL Hospital, go ahead and call them and activate the STEMI alert, because the cath lab, a couple things could happen with the cath lab in DAMBL, if they've already got a patient on the table, they're gonna need to clear that patient to get yours in, and it gives them a heads-up during your transport time to go ahead and get that out of the table. If for some reason it's after their normal operating hours, they've got 30 minutes to get that team assembled and get them into the cath lab and get the machines fired up to do that heart catheterization to get that vessel open. So please make sure you call, recognize it fast, call it early, and that's a better chance of survival for the patient. So, you know, so far, so good, we reviewed four or five today, some from the city, some from the county, some from Caswell County, and that was just one of the recommendations overall for EMS pre-hospital, is please make sure that if your monitor says ST elevation myocardial infarction, call the hospital, call the hotline, call them on the hear radio in the back of the truck, let them know you're coming in with something they need to know as soon as you know. 'Cause early detection, that's a better chance of saving a life and make sure that less heart damage is done during that event. Uh, otherwise, thank you to everybody, I appreciate all your dedication, keep up the good work, and we'll see you next month.